Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Evergreen Public Schools Board of Directors, Position Four. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the editorial page editor. This is Craig Brown, editor of the paper and member of the editorial board. And I apologize, the other two editorial board members are unavailable today, so you're stuck with the two of us. So, and just so you know, reporter Katie Gillespie is sitting in on this. She won't be asking questions here, but might want to speak with you later. And finally, we are videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And with that, we will get started. We'll start with introductions, take about a minute, introduce yourselves, give a little bit of background, explain why you were running for this position, and then after that, we'll move on to specific policy questions. And we'll start on the side.
I'm Divya Jain, running for Evergreen School Board, Position Four. I have fifteen years of experience in community service within the district, developing programs. Professionally, I'm a project manager and a business analyst with the experience on change management and root cause analysis. I'm running because approximately forty percent of our, of the district are the students of color. And I understand their struggles because my daughters and I, as a women of color, have experienced similar experiences in the district. I believe inclusivity in our schools will empower our students. On my campaign journey, I have met so many people who have shared their painful stories and are hopeful for, hopeful for a change if I'm elected. I will also be able to voice their concerns, as well as work collaboratively with the rest of the board to make better policies and programs that will benefit all our students.
Great, thank you. Rachel?
Hi there, I'm Rachel Rogers, and I am, as a profession, I'm a lawyer. I work for the Clark County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and have worked there for over eleven years. Before that, I worked for the city of Vancouver as an assistant city attorney, also in the criminal division. And I have two daughters. They are in kindergarten and in second grade, both at Fisher's Landing Elementary. And we have two dogs, which they would think it's very important for me to mention that as well. I was appointed to the board in March of this year, after a vacancy left by Todd Yuzuria. And I decided to run for the board after the teacher strikes last fall. And basically, what I saw is a breakdown in communication, a lack of transparency with what was going on with the board, and the community almost outraged at what was going on. And I really felt impassioned at that point in time to get involved. And was lucky enough for there to be a vacancy. That came up only a few months after that. I believe that I have, you know, my experience in serving my community as a prosecutor will serve me well on the board and has served me well. It's been able to bring a perspective, a legal perspective, to a lot of our conversations as board members that has been really helpful, as I've been told by other members as well. And I'm committed to responsible decision making and inclusive collaborative decision making. I think that it's really important to have community input, like what we did with our budget forums. I think things like that and important, significant decisions is something I will always be seeking out. And I hope to be a representative voice of our community, and to, you know, something that I understand the struggles of parents. I understand the struggles and the hopes of taxpayers and just people in our community who, you know, not, don't necessarily have, let's say, a dog in the fight, as in students in school, but who still care, because a strong public education affects our entire community. And those are some of the reasons why I'm running for the board.
Great, thank you. Thanks to both of you. One of the big issues, obviously, surrounds the budget and the impact, both short term and long term of McCleary. And the district had some budget cuts going into this year. Where do we stand on the budget? Where should, what kind of direction should the board seek moving forward? And we'll start with Rachel.
I think right now, we stand in a pretty good place on our budget. We unfortunately did face, you know, a little bit, a bit of a budget cut this past spring, looking at our nineteen twenty budget. And, you know, I do think that we're still quite underfunded based on McCleary. And there's still every year, hopefully, we'll make some changes and make some headway. Special education is drastically underfunded. And if we can make headway with the legislature on some of those, then we'll be in even better position. But the budget cut gave us, you know, an unfortunate opportunity, but an opportunity still, to figure out where we could cut and where we could be more effective and more efficient with our tax dollars. And we prioritized the children and putting our kids' needs first. And that looked, and I agree with what the, our board decided, is that that looked like putting teachers and educators, keeping them in the classroom, and trying to keep class sizes small, so that children can get as much hands-on attention as we can possibly give them, given, you know, the realities of funding. But I think that the community input was invaluable. And that really gave us so much feedback and was able to save some things like, you know, our jump start program for some kindergartners. That was something that we were looking at possibly cutting. Yet we've received feedback that that was a good thing, and that some people didn't want to cut that. And we were able to save that in our budget. You know, media assistance, initially, we had more on the cutting board than we did end up having to cut. But above all, you know, we saw drastic cuts to the administration. And we were able to prioritize the teachers and the educators in the classrooms. And as long as we can upkeep our facilities and doing the minimum possible essentially in that respect, while putting our money to where it was really needed.
Do you think the cuts were in the right direction? How could they have handled that better?
Well, initially, there were eighteen million cuts that were suggested. And finally, we did have about a million, eleven million dollars in cuts. And any, anytime then that these, these big cuts come, it always worries me, like, how is it going to impact our students, the quality of education for the, for our students? So, I attended several, and appreciated several community forums that district organized. And it was really nice. And I would want to continue doing that, because that brings the transparency with our communities. There are several places that I think cuts can come from that don't compromise the students, like keeping, keeping as many teachers as we can, direct services, some less testing, and less one-to-one devices.
And do you think, did the board do a good job of carving out effective cuts?
Yes, in some areas, yes, but-
Or could they have done better?
Well, I'm coming to that. There are several resources that can be assessed carefully. For example, I can give my own daughter's example. She was, she was put in a program just because I checked the box. And she never needed that resource. One, that money that got wasted on her. Other, she, another student would have made a, made the use of it. So there would be thousands of spots that we need to make some careful assessments and save money. And definitely, I would like to bring the media assistance back with, with any money that we can save on.
And what about, Divya, do you think the, the teacher strikes last year resulted in a new contract? Was that equitable? Was it too much, too little? Did anybody win in that conflict?
Well, I cannot, I don't want to say anybody win. The most that got impacted were the students. Anytime, any struggles happen anywhere, the stu, in this, in such cases, the students are getting the impact. And of course, the teachers, teachers' salary, they should be getting the living wage. I come from the family of teachers. My mom and all my aunts were teachers. And they should be getting a fair wage. They are, they are the ones that laying down, laying the foundation of the country. So, they should be paid fair.
Do you think that they are being paid fair now under the new contract?
Well, now, I think so. They are, they are better than, definitely before.
I'm sorry, go ahead, give us a second.
So, and the way that the school funding, the way the legislature made the fix, it, it really didn't fix the problem because of their one-size-fits-all policy doesn't work for all our district. Especially Ed, and especially the mental health resources are really very underfunded. And one of my big, big priority is, and also there are stronger reason that I, why I'm running, is have more, stronger intervention programs for behavior and mental health and substance abuse, so that our kids can get better programs and better attention in that direction. And I've already started working with Vancouver Police and some organizations to help our kids in that direction.
And just curious, what is the budget for Evergreen Public Schools?
It's about three hundred and eighty-five million.
Rachel, does that sound right?
Yes.
What do you think of the, the latest teacher contracts? Are those equitable?
I believe they did come to an equitable resolution in the end. I think overall, across our country, teachers could be paid better. And if we had endless resources, I would want to give teachers a lot more than what they're already getting. But within the realities of our budget, you know, we did come to a good resolution. Evergreen teachers are some of the best paid in the county, and I think that they well deserve it. And so, I'm happy with the end results. That happened with the contract. But I agree with Divya that nobody won in the teacher strike. And I would say that everybody lost a bit. And we lost in our relationship, the board lost in its relationship with the Evergreen Education Association, and with, you know, other, other unions as well, from what it appeared to be. And I think that's one of the biggest problems, is what the appearances were. And that's came from, you know, a lack of open communication from both the board and the superintendent at the time. And I think that we could have done a lot better in that regard.
Now, out of that three hundred and eighty-five million, what percentage goes to teacher salaries?
Oh, I could not tell you that.
Just curious. Right. Let me ask the stupidest question of the day. Divya, you and Mr. Jane, you have the same last name, but you're not related in any way. Is that correct?
Well, it pronounces the same, but the, it's spelled different.
I did notice that, yeah, okay. Let me ask a question that I hope is a little bit better. So, um, one of the things that schools struggle with is the number of children in poverty and, and dealing with homelessness. So, how much has the Evergreen District done? And what more can the school board do to try to, uh, help students that are caught in these horrible situations? So, I don't know, why don't you start? Since you're not related to Greg here in any way.
Well, I wish I was related.
Go ahead, no you don't. Trust me.
Well, I don't mind, I mean, healthy relation, good relations are always good. But we do have a good relation in the way, like, you're Columbian and I'm a customer of Columbia.
Well, good, we need more of those.
Yeah. See, that-
The homelessness and what this board can do, table to the students.
Okay, yes. We, in our district, there are a lot of homeless families. And district is trying to make some efforts in that directions. But what I see that when the families, when the kids are coming from the homeless families or the low-income families, those kids have a lot of mental, behavior and mental health issues. They are in that trauma. They get into some trauma in, so a lot of trauma-informed education should be there. And we need to prioritize all of those things. And then, we also have a lot of good, free and reduced lunch programs. And I would like to see that what, how, how we can make it more accessible to, to lower-income families, because sometimes the bar is, is at one level. And low, low-income family is just a little bit above. So, they don't qualify, but they are not even up there that, that they can, they can provide something to their kids. And when these kids come to the schools with empty stomachs, they cannot, they cannot focus. And many times, I have spoken to the teachers and I've seen many teachers that they have been providing these students out of their own pocket monies. So, it's kind of sad to see still that district is not able to do the needful, I mean, completely meet the needs.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, the free or reduced lunch. Is that, are those parameters, federal parameters? Are they set by the state, or can each district set the parameters wherever they want?
Well, I, I cannot say much on that, because, when-
And I don't know the answer, I'm curious.
Yeah. I will have to do more research on it, but definitely, I, I can get back to you with that. And I believe, like, the state, the state provides a lot of those funded, funds for, for those programs. Still, when I'm talking about the bar, the level, those, those students, when the, when the families are a little bit above that, just, I'm, I'm throwing in a number. I'd say twenty thousand dollar for, for the income for the family. And when they are just twenty-two or twenty-five, they still are very low. So, that's the time that when these kind of families do not qualify.
Sure.
So, I, I really feel for them, and would like to do something for them.
Rachel, do you know, is, is that a federal program who sets the parameters?
It is federal. It's a federal, you know, standard for a level of poverty to a level of income that a family needs to be at or below in order to receive-
Right.
-free lunches. And then another level that you use to receive reduced lunches. And one of the great things about Evergreen, though, for lunches at least, is that if a student doesn't have money on their account, they still get the same lunch, you know, that any other student gets. And so, it, there's no lunch shaming that's occurring. And, you know, even if a student doesn't have money that day, they still can get lunch. And it's then, you know, dealt with at a later time, you know, with the parents, if possible. So, that is at least one great thing that we have. We don't have any student going hungry.
And back to Craig's question about, just in general, how can the district help low-income or, or homeless kids?
Well, for homelessness, I mean, that's a problem that even our society hasn't figured out an answer to. And what I think we could do is have more family connection resources available at our schools. You know, we saw, well, and we can have more, you know, partnerships with community resources on homelessness and shelters, domestic violence, you know, like the YWCA, we could partner with them more, or have at least available communication with other resources, so that we could help families in need that way, at least be a source of information that people could go, come to and find out, where can I go for food? Where can I get a food bank at? And, you know, how to help, you know, students, I think, you know, I mentioned that at least during the school year, we don't have students going hungry at our schools, because if they don't have money on their account, they can still get lunch. But during the summer, we do still have, you know, an issue. And I think in the summers, we do have, you know, when kids aren't coming to school, that's a time where, you know, students may feel forgotten, or, you know, no attention paid to them. But we've had some donations and some resources of free lunches in our community for students who would have qualified for free and reduced lunch. And that's one of the problems, is the qualification for free and reduced lunch. I think we have a lot of families. It's hard to know. But we have, but we do believe we have a lot of families who would qualify for free and reduced lunches that haven't applied for it. And so, that's something that, you know, it generally, the application goes home at the very beginning of the school year, and then never again. And that's something very easy that we could change, is we could print out the copy of that application and send it home again, three months into the school year. Or in our newsletters, Home to Parents, encourage participation in these programs. That would help, that would help the school, the district's funding, because we get federal funding for free and reduced lunches. And that would also help these students not get, you know, a bill at the end of the school year for their lunches, for who might qualify.
And is that, the free and reduced lunches, is it entirely federally funded? Is some of it states-
It's subsidized. I, I mean, it's a federal poverty level that's set. And then we get reimbursement from the federal government for a certain amount of it.
Okay, yeah, I was curious. Now, and you mentioned possibly partnering with organizations in the community. Is some of that being done now, or?
There's, I believe there are some schools that have some family connection resources available at the schools. We should have that at every school. But I'm also seeing, you know, partnering, like, let's make it easy for people to get food, instead of having to drive to a separate food bank, drive to somewhere else. Could our schools potentially be a source for families to pick up food on a Friday night, to keep them, you know, for the weekend, so that our students have lunches for the weekends? You know, those who qualify for free and reduced lunch, what are they doing on the weekends? You know, do they have enough food in their homes? That's something that, you know, what happens at home greatly impacts what happens in our schools. And it impacts our students in significant ways. And I think the more we can support our families at home and help them, the better off all of our students will be.
I would like to add something to it. I remember, there are family resource centers in, in the schools and at Elahie. I used to donate to fam, family resource centers, clothing and food. And at Mountain View also, they have Mandy's Pan, Pantry. And my kids have been taking donations for, for those things. And it's been funded by all the donations from-
And do you think, would it be worthwhile to extend some of those and ex, extend it to more schools?
Absolutely, yes. And I would like to see more family resource centers in every school, so that anyone can take benefit out of that. All those, the low-income families would be welcome to.
Divya, twice I heard you mention the need for more behavioral health and, and emotional health kind of programs and curriculum for students and teachers. Can you expand a little bit on what your point, about that point? That's, that was interesting to me.
Okay, yes. So, what I see, a lot of mental health issues come from bullying and, and the discrimination that happens, racist actions that happen. So, throughout the district, like, it, it is very common. And things, things that happen in the district, and my own kids have received that discrimination throughout their grade school. So, I know that for sure. Many of those issues happen because of the racist and bullying. And nowadays, we, we have a lot more cyberbullying as well. And it is really very hard to control the cyberbullying. But I have idea, like, I would involve students in making the policies, writing the policies for bullying and cyberbullying, because they know for sure how, what happens, how that impacts the students, and how this, this can, this can solve the problem. And then, when they are involved in problem solving, it empowers them even more. So, I'm, I'm, I'm a big believer of a student empowerment in many ways. And inclusivity is, is of course, empowerment.
And along those lines, earlier, you mentioned people of color, students of color, and how you could be an inspiration to them. What role can the board play in, in facilitating students of color and improving their experience?
As a woman of color, I myself can represent the, the board. And I can understand, being, have experienced those, those instances myself and my, with my daughters as well, I know how, how these things happen, and how, how people feel. I can totally put myself in their shoes. And on my camping trail, I have met so many people that have shared their painful stories. And one woman I, I was talking to a few days ago, and she had, had really bad experience with the district related to her child with a special need. And she was really in tears. And it's, it really breaks my heart to see. And as a, as a board member, and I'm very collaborative and a team player, I can bring that, my unique perspective, and, and, and help, help the board in putting the better policies, so that it can benefit not only our students of color, but everyone. Because I truly believe in inclusivity, because everyone is a special. Every student is a special. We need to look at each other and everyone with respect.
Rachel, does Evergreen have a particular problem with bullying, cyberbullying?
I don't think we have any more of a problem than any other school district does.
Has the board taken any steps, in the-
We are, we are talking about a, you know, a safety policy. That's been, something that's in the works, and that's probably going to be made, approved upon, or approved, rather, the actual safety policy in the next few months. But I think there are more steps we could be taking to, you know, I mean, bullying, intimidation, harassment, these are all issues that our students face. And I think that probably the most, you know, the thing that our students need most is for tangible responses from the people who are there with them every day, from the teachers, the educators, staff persons, the administration who are on campus. And I think that if we have more trainings for our educators on how to respond to incidents of bullying, you know, something more than just, oh, ignore them, or do nothing. And have, I, I, I just, I think that that could really help with having a student feel heard. Because that's one of the things I think that is probably the most damaging about bullying and incidents of intimidation harassment that occur at schools, is a student feels that the adults around don't care that it's happening to them. And I think showing them, know that we will take a response, that we will take a stand, and that we will have a zero tolerance policy, especially for situations involving, you know, discrimination based on race or ethnicity, that we cannot allow incidents of violence in our schools. We cannot allow racism and discrimination on, you know, that basis to, to stand. But the adults who are on the ground, you know, right there are the ones that we need to most empower to make a difference in the daily lives.
So, is that something that takes place at, at the grassroots level, at the school level? Or how much can the board influence that?
I think the board can influence it by directing our superintendent to encourage this type of action from our teachers, educators, staff members. We can indicate that this is what's expected of you, this is our policy on- We can indicate that this is what's expected of you, this is our policy on how we handle incidents of bullying, intimidation, harassment. And, you know, that's some of the things that we as a board have been talking about is is how we want our teachers and educators to respond when they see situations happening and the fact that we need to know that they need to be brought. And that's one of the things that we implemented this year was a new training on um boundary invasions for our teachers. And um kind of along the same lines is we need situations to be brought to the attention of administration every time, not just sometimes, but every time that you see something suspicious, that you see anything, you know, going on like that.
Um I would like to um add a few more things to that. Um um I would like to add uh training um for teachers and all the staff on uh microaggressions and implicit bias that can help our students um um thrive and uh and be successful and so that they can focus on their education. Um I personally um I share, I can share my personal experience on that is um uh when my daughter was uh, my older daughter was in second grade, uh she used to take Indian food to school. And uh one day, a boy sitting next to her in the lunchroom looked at her lunchbox and said, ew. Um and that was very devastating for my my daughter. And that day on, she stopped taking any Indian food. All she used to take were was a slice of bread and few chips, nothing nutritious. And she never used to like the cafeteria food as well because it used to be so processed. Um so um I looked at that and uh built a program called geography passport program. Uh it was teaching all the world geography, uh all about hundred and ninety-six countries of the world to our elementary level students where um um where this program was uh um talking about all the all the different cultures and their foods. And kids were becoming more culturally du- educated and they were respectful and making better friends. Um and this program, what I can say, um I started that program twelve years ago um uh with only eight teachers at Ilahi Elementary School. Uh very soon, it got uh to all over the school. And in the third year of my uh running this program, uh it has started catching attention of other parents and teachers in various schools in the district. And they wanted me to start the program in their schools. And I started, uh I expanded the program. And this program used to cost only two dollar per child per year. You don't even get your cup of coffee in that money. So and and the uh another best part of this program was uh I always used to see how hard work the teachers are doing. So this program was not putting even a single bit of stress on the teachers' already overloaded plates because uh uh the way I built it, uh teachers used to just had to send the emails uh my with my information, with all the information about every month, the learning, uh what countries that they are learning about. And they used to just send it to the parents and parents used to uh take it at home. And that way, not only the students were learning, but the parents were also learning. So that it really created that huge uh nice, culturally diverse education throughout our community. So um and I feel like, yes, we should have some more uh programs such such as that that can in um uh make our communities more um culturally diverse education and um be respectful to everyone and include um inclusive.
But um s- move on real quick. Uh what would you recommend to enhance uh school safety? The safety in in the physical buildings?
Very good question again. Yes. Uh school safety is of course uh one of my priorities because again, bullying and mental health, again, that takes place. And want to have these uh uh trainings for teachers and staffs on microaggression and implicit bias and also like uh involving our kids, as I said before, in uh uh creating the policy for cyberbullying because they know.
Yeah, and and I'm sorry, beyond that, I'm sorry.
And beyond that, I would say like, yes, in past few years, a sc- uh district has done a lot uh better in avoiding the gun violence in our schools. Uh but um looking, I mean, coming from my background as a business analyst and emergency management, that's what I was uh doing at Bonneville Power Administration. And I would look at, reassess these safety measures and make sure that our schools are a safe haven for our kids.
Right now, do you think those safety measures are adequate or is more needed?
Uh I would have to reassess.
And and um would you advocate for teachers carrying guns?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh Rachel, what needs to be done as far as securing the physical buildings?
I think a lot of our buildings are pretty old. And so some of the um some of the bond money that we got a few years ago has been helping to update some of the schools. We were able to keep on the head of our security, Shane Gardner. Um and I think he that's an important person to give great insight to, um, you know, the security of our schools. We partner with SROs, School Resource Officers, and I think that's important to keep on. The new schools that we are building, you know, will are have a lot of safety measures put in place. And I think that that's really important. Um some of the things that we are seeing in these new schools is a central entrance so that anyone has to go by, um as opposed to like, let's say, Mountain View that has, you know, multiple different availabilities and anyone could en- enter like a lot of classrooms. And that's some of the our old buildings, um our old elementary schools even have that as well, outdoor access to schools as opposed to all, you know, through one centralized um access from the outside that can make that all visitors have to pass through and check in. Um that's, you know, one thing. Um I would not advocate for teachers carrying guns. Um I think that that's um not something that I want our children to necessarily see in our classrooms to be worried about. Um accidental gun violence is a big problem amongst children. And our s- teachers are, you know, I don't want them to have to, I mean, just the actual, if we just think about the actual physical demands of a teacher's job, especially, let's say, in elementary school where they're squatting down to be at the level of a child's desk, to be able to have eye contact with them and talk with them. And there's a child next to them, you know, where where Divya is to me now or another child over here. You know, where where's that teacher's gun on her on her hip or his hip and at all times being, you know, careful? I think we're turning, that would be turning our um teachers into police officers. And our police officers have, you know, a more gruff um kinda demeanor most of the time than we want our teachers to have for a reason because they're heavily armed. And they could at any time turn their situation into a dangerous situation because they could possibly be facing someone who could disarm them. And, you know, that is something that I don't want our teachers to have to worry about. I don't want our children to even have the possibility of you turning a gun on another child in school that was taken from a teacher. I think that risk is is way too high.
Uh and Divya, what what is the biggest area that the school board can improve? Where are they falling short right now?
Um. Inclusivity. Um the uh because the um forty per- when the forty pers- approximately forty percent of uh uh of the district are the students of color, um there need to be a representation. And I believe my uh election would bring that representation. And the these people will will see uh will have that access. And due to my collaborat- collaborative nature, like, I will be able to bring that uh uh sh- um bring that unique perspective onto the board and help uh help the board in that direction so that uh we are doing better for our uh our, all of our students.
Uh Rachel, you're fairly new to the board. What do you see as the shortcomings? Where can they improve?
I think that where I most wanna see us improve is community input and communication and um.
With with the budget cuts, do you think the board did a good job of soliciting that?
I do. I do think we did a really good job and that was led by our new superintendent, Mike Merlino. And I think he did an excellent job in kind of envisioning that and really helping put that together. I think that things like that are absolutely what we need. I would love to see more community members at our meetings. I'd like to see more communities know about our meetings and um about what's going on at them. I think our website could be a lot better. Um the district's website could be a lot better at advertising that. I think our schools could be better about communicating with our parents um about school board meetings, et cetera. And, you know, I would like to address um Divya's, you know, comment about inclusivity. I think that diversity is so important. Um it allows the voices of people of color and minorities and underrepresented persons to be heard. Diversity um can also create buy-in and build trust from our community um in the process. But it's, you know, it's still important to elect or appoint qualified persons to the job. And um if you, it would undermine the argument for diversity to appoint someone who's not the best qualified for the job. And there are things that the board can do now to ensure that voices of those um in our community who are underrepresented are heard. I think that we could create a minority advisory committee, specifically seek out persons of color and minorities or underrepresented persons to participate. We could empower our administration and teachers by giving them trainings with tangible responses that they could implement when dealing with situations that involve racism or discrimination. I think that a lot of our educators or administration don't always know exactly how to respond. And so their response um in that moment in a school is lacking. And that is the response that the child takes home with them and sometimes stays with them forever is how the adult there responded. And so I think that um in situations like that, we could implement more. I agree with Divya, implicit bias trainings, microaggression trainings. Um I implemented implicit bias training for my office and gave that training to the attorneys in my office um because I saw the importance of what that kind of, you know, issue brings to our jobs as prosecutors. And there are a lot of corollaries between the, you know, criminal justice system and the school board system. And I think that it's a, you know, it's generally, it's a system. And when discrimination starts at the ground up, it's can be hard to stop when your position is in the middle of that system. But that it's still important to always question our motives, to question our judgment and to make sure that we are doing things with the right intentions um as we're moving forward. And to even just be aware that you might have biases that you don't know about and that everyone has biases. And to let it be okay that people have biases, but to indicate it's not okay to act on those biases and it's not okay to, you know, and that your biases are these, you know, kind of intrinsically learned things from society. And that might not be right. Just because it's what your automatic thought is, doesn't mean that that's what's right. And let's learn how to question our biases and teach that to our educators and our administration so they can pass that on to our students.
Now, I think we've probably just touched on on it a bit. I'm sorry, you wanna add something?
Uh yes. Um uh and um as I am a project manager and a business analyst, I have uh implemented these programs uh because I was able to analyze the gaps. Uh that's become, my professional experience brings that to the board. Uh and also, I am planning to um invite various communities uh to the board meetings uh so that they can come and share the successes and their challenges directly to the board. Uh s- um that's my plan and this would bring uh more transparency with our communities. So um want to bring as much uh transparency because communication, uh as elected officials, we we need to be more transparent with our um um communities.
Now, I think we probably touched on a lot of it, but give us your final pitch for why voters should support you. And please mention any notable endorsements. We'll start with Divya.
Okay. As I said, I have fifteen years of experience with community service in the district. And I bring the lens of diversity to the board and I bring the skills we need. Uh I did this work while my daughters attended the Evergreen schools. And now my youngest has uh just graduated. Uh I have a lot more time to give to our schools. Um and before that, also, I s- at one of the things, I said, I'm adopting these kids. So uh in these fifteen years, I have created and implemented cost-effective programs that are still going strong today. Two of my most important programs are geography passport program and art and science fair at Ilahi Elementary School. Uh this was the, uh these were inspired by the need to reduce bullying, provide learning opportunities uh and culturally diverse education and maximize student potential. Inclusivity for our students is empowerment. My dad, who recently passed away, was always encouraging the kids for better edu- education at whatever level they were. Uh he was always in the leadership position um in the communities, community service that he did throughout his life. I'm an exact reflection of him. And if I uh I'm able to serve in this position, this would be a true tribute to my dad. Um endorsements, I've been endorsed by National Women Political Caucus, One America Awards, Sierra Club, Washington State Federation of Democratic Women, Eighteenth L D Democrats, League of United Latin American Citizens, Indivisible Greater Vancouver, City Councilor Laura Lebaski, Washoe School Board Donna Sinclair, Port Commissioner Don Orange, and former Vancouver School Board Member Kathy Gillespie.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh Rachel, use your final pitch and please mention any endorsements.
Well, I benefited from an excellent public education and I believe that all children in our community deserve that same opportunity. And I believe that because I think that public education creates productive future members of society. And so I think this is a community issue, not just a parent issue or school teacher issue. Um my experiences as a parent, my leadership abilities, my work experience and my commitment to public service make me the best candidate for the position. I've been endorsed by the Teachers Union, the Evergreen Education Association, the Southwest Washington Labor Council, IBEW Local Forty-Eight, McClellan County Women Democrats, Seventeenth Legislative District Democrats, and the Washington Federation of Democratic Women.
Okay, well, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.